I'll call this meeting to order at 6:31. It's the Planning Commission for Monday, November 9th, 2020. And would you do a roll? Call Darcy, please.
You bet. Commissioner Lopes.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Pack.
Here.
Commissioner Pascoe.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Schrodl.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
And Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Okay. Oh, very good. That's me.
Oh, Commissioner Phillips is absent for the record.
Thank you, Darcy. Do we have anyone out there in cyber world wanting to, I mean, anyone out there that might add a public comment or add to the agenda? No?
We have one attendee.
Do we want to ask if there's any public comment coming out of attendee?
Our attendee is staff. It's Karen.
That's Karen Birig.
Oh, now, we don't want to hear.
So, I'm gonna. I'll let her in.
You love to care.
Moving along, Mrs. Goyner, Marcy's attendee, but I'm good. Oh, here it is. Oh, you didn't hear that. All right, it is the Marcy Fritzy evening. We have a lot to learn from her, and so I'm just gonna turn it over and hope that you've got a good, strong voice for tonight.
Well, I am tag teaming with Joy for the first presentation. The Housing Strategies Project is the first thing on the agenda, and I need to share my screen. Darcy, can you let me share my screen?
Yep.
Thank you. All right.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. Come on. There we go. So, I'm gonna start off, we're gonna have a housing conversation, and it is about a project that we are working on and planning, the Land Use Housing Strategies Project. I am also going to give you a brief update on the Houseville 2001 rulemaking, because I know that's on a lot of people's minds. So, we're gonna split the presentation up into kind of two parts. The first one is the work that we've been doing on the first phase of the Housing Strategies Project, and then we're gonna have some discussion about the strategies and have maybe some questions answered about preferences for options for those strategies, and then I'm going to talk about the Houseville 2001. So, is this really the first slide? What is the Housing Strategies Project? You will recall, hopefully all of you, back in 2019, there were two major undertakings by the county. One was the Housing Needs Analysis. The other one was this task force that the Board of County Commissioners put together, the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force. Both of those groups looked at housing issues and made recommendations about things that could be done in the county to help facilitate the development of more housing, and in particular, more affordable housing. And so, a lot of the recommendations that came out of, particularly out of the task force, are things that we in the planning world are not working on, but I assure you, they are being worked on by Health, Housing and Human Services. That agency houses the Housing Authority. They really build and manage affordable housing. They provide a lot of services that people experiencing homelessness and low-income citizens need. What we are talking about with this project, with the Land Use Housing Strategies Project, are land use regulations, things that fall in our zoning code that relate to, that, see, I'm missing something. I'm sorry. That relate to how, what sorts of barriers there might be in our zoning code and what kinds of changes could be made in order to facilitate more housing development. And so, about a year ago, I think it was, we came and talked to you, and we introduced this idea of an issues paper, and we had, we talked through about 12 potential strategies that we were looking at putting into this Housing Strategies Project. They are strategies that came from state mandates from Houseville 2001 and Senate Bill 1051 in 2017. There are strategies that came out of task force recommendations. They came out of recommendations that we had put into our long-range planning work program. And we assess these strategies, looking at it through a rapid equity assessment, whether or not it would produce new units, looking at the regulatory context. And we put each of these strategies that are listed here, and I'm not gonna read through all of them. We put them into basically three buckets, three phases. And what we heard from you at that planning, at the work session that we had, was that you supported the three phases and the work program that we had proposed to move forward. We then went and talked to the board, and they said largely the same things, or at least the conclusion was the same. They didn't say the same things as ever do. But we were told to go forth and start with Phase 1. And so, basically, the three phases are, this was the timeline that we had presented at the time of the, when we were talking about the issue paper. It is still roughly accurate. You know, having to, having to try to grapple with doing public outreach in the time of COVID has slowed us down a little bit, and just generally, all of the logistics with working from home and COVID have slowed us down a little, but we are roughly on the same schedule, roughly sticking to this schedule. So, Phase 1, we are easily halfway through. We're sort of in the fall 2020 box there, and we are expecting to to have some draft code in the coming months and start going through hearing, the hearings process for any code amendments toward the beginning, beginning to, you know, early, early spring next year. And Phase 2 hasn't really started, and I can talk a little bit about that when we get down to Phase 2. We're doing some pre-work. We have applied for and gotten a grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and we are working on getting contractors on board to help us with some of the public outreach with that project. And then, of course, the Houseville 2001 conversation that we're having later ties into Phase 2. So, I am going to hand off the presentation about Phase 1, which is underway to Joy Field. She's been working with me on it and has done a lot of the research that went into the, what we call the information strategy sheets that were included in your packet. And she is going to go through those three strategies in a little bit more detail, and then we're gonna have some discussion about them. And Joy, I can't see everybody. I'm assuming you're there, so I'm just gonna jump in.
I am here, and I am unmuted. Thank you, Martha. So, in Phase 1, the first three strategies that we're looking at include considering increasing or removing maximum density requirements for multifamily developments in certain commercial zoning districts. Those include the general commercial, the corridor commercial, the office commercial, and the retail commercial. Most of these zoning districts are inside the urban growth boundary, and that will come into play later in our discussion. Strategy 2 is to consider changing the minimum parking standards for multifamily developments based on their proximity to transit or the dwelling unit affordability of the housing development. And Strategy 3 is to consider providing a tiered density bonus for developers that include affordable housing in their developments. As I mentioned, the commercial zoning districts that would be affected by either increasing or eliminating the maximum density are primarily located in the metro urban growth boundary. And these are commercial districts that currently allow multifamily housing. The parking standards and the affordable housing bonus may affect other zoning districts, including those urban zones on Mount Hood, such as the rural tourist commercial and the mountain recreational resort zoning districts. Staff are working with a working group that includes about 16 members, ranging from housing developers, housing advocates, the business community, and community planning organization, in addition to some members of the public. We have so far had two meetings to discuss the Phase 1 strategies and help get input from the working group on the potential for code amendments that relate to those first three strategies. We anticipate that later this year, we will have an additional meeting, and then early in 2021, we'll have another meeting, and those will be to discuss the draft code amendments based on the, what we have heard from the working group and from the community engagement. Eliminating or increasing the maximum density that's allowed in commercial zones is needed because currently, the county code has no height limitations or maximum floor area ratio or maximum density if you are building a commercial development. However, there are restrictions if you want to build a multifamily housing development in those commercial zoning districts. And that is because the maximum density is based on the high-density residential density, which is about 25 units per acre. As I mentioned, most of these commercial zoning districts that would be considered in Strategy 1 are found in the urban areas along major transportation corridors. There are other zoning districts that do not allow multifamily dwellings, including the community commercial or the neighborhood commercial. And then, there's other zoning districts that currently have no maximum for multifamily dwellings, and that they occur in or near the Clackamas Regional Center. What we have heard from developers is that they need an increase in the maximum density allowed to make the development of multifamily housing financially feasible for them. And when you look at those zoning districts that have no maximum density, that are currently being developed by developers, near the Fuller Road Station is one example. They are currently being developed with 40 to 48 units per acre. I'm waiting for Martha to switch the slide. Thank you, Martha. So, looking at this map, it identifies the commercial areas that we're discussing with Strategy 1. The bright red are those zoning districts that currently allow multifamily zoning or multifamily developments. The deep red, if you go back to the map.
Can you guys see the map?
No.
Okay.
It's on the next slide. Go back one slide.
This is the map of the commercial districts. Can you see that?
Yeah.
It's like there was a delay, I think, because I had changed it to this, and then, okay.
Right.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. The bright red are those commercial zoning districts that have a maximum density of 25 units per acre. The deep red are those zoning districts that have no maximum around the, the Clackamas Town Center. The salmon or light pink color are those commercial areas that currently do not allow multifamily housing. And then, the office apartments are the, the other that has a maximum of 18 dwelling units per acre. Strategy 2 is being looked at because currently, the county just has one parking ratio for all multifamily developments, and it is based on the number of bedrooms. And it ranges from 1.25 to 1.75 parking units or parking spaces per dwelling unit. The only way to change that required parking is by requesting the Board of County Commissioners to modify the parking requirements for your development. One of the things that is currently lacking in the code is a parking requirement for studio units. So, studio units that have no bedrooms would have to provide at least 1.25 units, because there's, there's no other option for the studio units. What we have heard is that the data show that household income can affect how many vehicles a household has. And so, if you have, are providing multifamily units for seniors or low-income individuals, you may not need 1.25 spaces per dwelling unit. Also, the proximity to the light rail all impacts the need for parking by reducing it. It does not eliminate it based on the data from Portland State, but it does reduce the need for parking. Martha?
I'm looking at the map. I think it just, there's a delay on your end. Okay.
There is. Thank you. So, in the map, again, the bright red are those commercial zones that allow multifamily housing. The orangish are the mixed-use zones that allow multifamily housing in a mixed-use development. The light pink are those medium-density multifamily residential zones, and then, the light yellow is the high-density multifamily residential zones. In Strategy 3, looking at the affordable housing bonus, this affordable housing bonus is not often used by developers. It provides up to an 8% increase in the base density. And so, if a developer is wanting to build 100 units and proposes to make eight or more units affordable, they can only add up to eight units to the project for a total of 108 units. Other jurisdictions have bonuses that are much higher, up to a 50% increase in density for, including affordable housing. And other jurisdictions also offer flexibility to other development standards, such as parking and setbacks, or landscaping, or height. So, not having a height restriction for affordable housing. So, as we're looking at the affordable housing bonus and thinking about how to increase the number of units, there are things to consider. One of those is looking with an equity lens. That was one of the recommendations that the Housing Affordability and Homelessness Task Force had, was that as we were looking at ways of increasing the number of units and the type of units, increasing that diversity, we need to look at how the options impact different groups. The working group that we, that staff are working with did that at the last meeting. And one of the factors that they talked about was increasing or eliminating the maximum density on commercial-zoned land may make affordable housing difficult to develop because it increased the land costs. Other factors that the working group discussed was that all of these strategies are interconnected, and there's a lot of factors that affect the actual number of dwelling units in a development. It's not only the zoning district, but it might be the required parking, or the required landscaping, or the cost that adding extra floors to get more dwelling units adds to the development. If, if the density in commercial zoning districts is increased or eliminated, it would make an affordable housing bonus less useful in those commercial zoning districts. But the affordable housing bonus is not only for commercial zones. It also impacts a broader range of urban residential zones.
So, do you want me to tag in now, Joy, or you want to talk about the slide too?
Um, you're welcome to talk about where you found these pictures and what they represent.
Okay. So, so as I was thinking about this, as we were doing research and putting together these strategy sheets, I, I'm a very visual person, and I was trying to think about what, I mean, what does, what does 40 units an acre look like? What does 100 units an acre look like? Because it's 100 units an acre kind of sounds really scary. And so, I found a couple of examples, and one is the Rosewood Station Apartments that actually are under construction right now by the Fuller Road Station, and they're at about 40 units an acre, and that's the three pictures down here on the right. And this is, you can see it under construction from 205. It's right at, I think, Audi and 205, right behind the Walmart, I want to say. And then, the other one, this is one of the more, the Rosewood Station really is one of the more dense projects that we have in Clackamas County. The other one is actually a rendering, and so, also, what, what has been going on at the same time, and Karen is here and can speak to it if you have any questions, and I think she's actually talking to you about it at your next, or your December meeting, is there's been a project going on right around the Park Avenue Light Rail Station to look at some potential code changes in the commercial zones and look at specific design standards. And at, we, we've been coordinating with it, with this project, with that project, to, to ask some of the same questions and get feedback from the consultants and the working groups that are doing that project. And one of the things the consultants had done was this test case. They found an opportunity site that's near the Park Avenue Light Rail Station, and they, they started putting a, a potential development on this site based on the recommendations that were coming out of that project for, for reduced parking and increases in density and different setbacks and other design standards. And this up here is what they came up with, and this actually calculates out to about 100 units an acre. And so, I just found like visual, that visually, those things helped me a lot as we were thinking through it, because it's not just some scary big number anymore. And so, that's why I put these together. And then, this gets us to our first sort of stopping point. We wanted to have a little bit of discussion about potential options. So, Joy went through and explained briefly what each of these different strategies was. I hope you had an opportunity to read the strategy sheets that we have put together and put in your attachment. It provides a little bit more context, a little bit more data and information about the research that we completed. And at the end of each of those, it has a couple of potential options for what we could do. And so, because it's really hard to talk about one option in a vacuum, you know, they're all really tied together, like Joy mentioned. Even if, even if the maximum density is completely eliminated, the actual number of units that could be, that would be built on a particular site are limited by things like how much parking has to be provided. And if it has to be structured parking, it suddenly becomes very expensive. Over, I don't know, maybe five or six stories, you get into different construction types that are much more expensive. And then, of course, there's required landscaping, and there's setbacks, and so, there are other things that limit how many units could actually fit on a site. And so, I, I put together this table to sort of have all of the options out there to think about together. And so, in the first column were options that we had thought about. We talked to the working group about, related to the maximum density, anything from no maximum density in the commercial areas. Something the working group was really interested in is maybe not eliminating maximum density in the commercial zones, but for, for general development, market rate development, but only eliminating it for affordable units, which essentially becomes your affordable housing bonus in that area. Or is it more appropriate to perhaps increase the maximum density above 25 dwelling units an acre, but then, what, what, what's the right number? Or there's potential options for eliminating or increasing maximum densities only in certain areas, like near transit or near parks or near other amenities that somebody could walk to. And, and then, lastly, there is potentially an option to increase allowance for housing in other commercial districts. Those would be the neighborhood commercial and, I can't remember what the other one was that Joy mentioned earlier. Those tend to be smaller sites, more in established single-family neighborhoods, and so, it certainly is worth a conversation if we feel strongly about it. They, we can go back to the map and look at where those sites would be. And then, in terms of parking ratios, there's a number of ways we could do it. We could create a big table with a lot of detail about, and assign different parking ratios by affordability levels, proximity to transit, if it's serving only seniors. Or what some jurisdictions do is have a parking ratio. You know, your parking ratio is one space per unit, but if you are providing units at affordable to 60% median income, then you can ask for a reduction for those particular ones, up to a certain percentage or a certain number. And then, there's this, also, this idea of identifying, allowing for future development of surface lots on a case-by-case basis if, after the housing is developed, it's demonstrated that they really don't need all the parking. So, it's sort of an adjustment after the fact. And then, affordable housing bonuses, jurisdictions do lots of different things. I mean, a lot of them really just have a higher bonus, and some of them increase based on how affordable the unit is, you know, in increments. Some other jurisdictions have options for other flexibilities, setbacks, obviously parking, but we would talk about that under, under the parking. And so, those, that's sort of the whole suite of options that have been rattling around in all of our heads for the last, I don't know, six, eight months. Those are the options that we discussed with the working group, and these are the options that we would love to hear your thoughts on. And would it be easier for me to keep this up while we talk, or is it easier for me to take it down and actually see everybody? Keep it up? Okay. So, anybody have any insight for me, for us? Questions about the Phase 1 or the Housing Strategies Project so far?
I do.
Okay.
I, I have three things I'm gonna throw at you. This was a, a learning experience this past summer. We had mass evacuations. Is that to be considered when we're putting in, we're increasing populations? How can we deal with those types of evacuations that, in the time of need? Second would be, what about equity, diversity, and inclusion when you're bringing in affordable housing to middle housing? This must come together, in my book. Otherwise, you're excluding and pushing your lower incomes outside your middle incomes, again, making no progress. And I forgot my third. Sorry.
I'm, I'm sure that you'll, I'm sure it'll come to you.
Yeah, well.
And so those are those are important considerations. I don't think that the the mass evacuation conversation really has entered much into this particular conversation about phase one strategies. Partly because, well, I don't know, it just is not something that came up. And I feel like that's really more of how to deal with something on a temporary basis. And so I'm not sure if that really directly ties into trying to create just more and more affordable housing. But somebody else can jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong. And then as for your other point, it is a good point. And I think that one thing that we are keeping in mind in a conversation that's come up a lot with the working group is this idea of displacement. And so, yes, we want to find ways to provide more housing and more affordable housing, but we really need to be conscious about the decisions that we're making and who they might be affecting and in what way. And one of the things that came out of that conversation was this idea that, well, that's great, but you know, if we want to get rid of density and just let developers build what they want. But what's going to happen is land prices are going to skyrocket and affordable developers are not going to be able to afford to build in these places anymore. And so it's displacement is and and business displacement too. Because we are talking about commercial areas. And these are all things that we are trying to juggle and trying to be thoughtful about the implications of the decisions that we're making.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah.
So Martha, this is Karen. I just wanted to add that on the transportation side that we are looking at separately from the housing project, but looking at reviewing our emergency transportation routes. And there is actually a region-wide process that's also looking at the emergency transportation routes throughout the system. So that process will likely be informed by the experience that we just had. So while not directly related, there there is some work that's underway.
Very sorry, I'm not being mindful of the raised hand. Thank you, Karen. I did raise my hand and it was shifting to the housing bonus. One of my questions, just more out of curiosity, has it been tried in Clackamas County where there's just a requirement that you just have to have within these parameters affordable housing and a percentage?
And so that's inclusionary zoning. And I know that Portland has tried it with, I feel like, mixed results. There are some pretty strict rules at the state level about what you cannot do with inclusionary zoning. And I'm not, in all honesty, not super familiar with those. That is an option that we could put on the table if that's something that we're interested in. We haven't done a ton of research on that and we certainly could. I think Jennifer wants to say something because she knows more about it than I do.
I did read it all at one point. That does not mean I've retained it all. I can tell you there's a requirement that there be at least twenty units. And I believe it's in a single building. I'll have to double check that. So not every project would we be able to require inclusionary zoning. The other issue is that it does require the county to offer some sort of financial. There's a trade-off, like we have to provide some kind of benefit to the developer. And there are choices that I will need to refresh my memory on. But it is something where there'd have to be some some funding identified to kind of offset that requirement.
Just a quick follow-up. And if you do look at that, maybe the impact of the funding that Jennifer was just mentioning versus bonus. Because bonus, you're you're going to lose something in that offering. So I'm just was curious.
Thanks, Kimmy.
Anybody else raise hand or have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
I know what my third question was, and that was pandemic. We're condensing people. Is that being taken into consideration? This may not be the last pandemic we have. Also, I, you know, I'm just throwing this out here. Last time we met on this subject, it was we need to get people undercover. Now, if we bring them all together, what's the chances of spreading our COVID? I know this is a tough question.
It it is a tough question, and I don't know the answer to it. I think there's different bodies of research that have come to different conclusions. And I always find it interesting personally. I I'm a I'm like a numbers fanatic. And so I periodically go on the state's website or go on the Oregonian and look at all the numbers and the densities by zip codes and counties and all that kind of stuff. And I find it really interesting when you look at the zip code map that the highest rates per, I think it's per ten thousand, are not in the densest areas necessarily. And so there's a lot of other factors besides just density that are feeding into that. I don't know what they are. I'm not going to pretend to know. I have my ideas, but those are my ideas. And so it is a consideration, but I don't think there's anything definitive out there that makes such a direct correlation between density and increased risk or cases. I could I could be wrong. I'm just going from the few things that I have seen. I think as we move forward through and and pass the pandemic, there's going to be a lot more research done, a lot more data to to help us make decisions.
Yes, thank you.
I'm raising my hand.
Hey, Tom.
I have a question. I'm trying, I was looking to try to remember where I read this. I guess the question I have is, how does the the metro bill that was, not a bill, but passed that had to do with affordable housing? How does that play into this?
Are you talking about the Metro Bond for building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's actually for construction. And that is being, I'm not using the right word, implemented, or at least the Clackamas County portion. Or the monies are being distributed through the Housing Authority, I believe, or H, Health Housing and Human Services. And there have been a number of projects, both in unincorporated and in the incorporated areas that have successfully applied for and awarded some of that money. And so it 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 doesn't directly affect that. I guess if there's any opportunities moving forward, there may be some more sites available if we if we allow for more multifamily development in some of these in some of these areas. But currently, if somebody is proposing a multifamily development using that money, they would just have to meet our current standards. And I think there are a couple, one or two of them in the unincorporated area, right?
Like, I guess what I was getting to, does it, does it, does it make that money? Do you get more bang for the buck with how that money's spent if you implement some of these options versus what the current code allows?
You might, I suppose you might get more more units on a site. But I think most of the money is already allocated, isn't it?
Yes, I mean, most of the county's money is not all of it, but most of it. But one of the projects that they are funding is the rendering that you showed, Martha, the hundred unit. I believe, if that's, is that on a Geller's project at Fuller Road?
No.
It's not, okay. Well, there's one at Fuller Road that's that's qualified, at least at this point, for funding. I don't know that anything's completely done. And in that case, there was a parking reduction requested. And, you know, it's kind of a long story. But I think the the reducing the parking gives them more bang for the buck. That's what the developers will tell you, yes.
And there's convenient parking at the Fuller Road Light Rail Station for the residents.
We'll see.
And and so that one that Jennifer is referring to is in a zoning district that doesn't have a maximum density. And it's proposed around forty-eight units per acre and did get a reduction in parking.
I see. Carrie Pack has her hand up, and then Brian Pasco.
So thank you. I am kind of new to this. I might be asking some silly questions that everybody else already knows about. But the, I kind of, you know, reflect on Murph's question of, are we? It feels like we're kind of warehousing all of these affordable housing units just by shoving it into one or two locations without having other considerations. So I know that one of the things that that I've heard about is the housing-first concept where you're trying to bring the services that are necessary to support the low-income housing patrons, you know, folks that would be that are that are eligible for low-income housing or affordable housing. I guess they're different. I don't know. There's different terminology, it's probably same means. But is there a way that we can try? Is is housing-first concept at least being considered by the county? Or, you know, somehow marrying the services necessary by the folks that are going to be serviced by these housing? So that's one question. And then the second question is, once the developers are given these concessions or or incentives and whatnot, what are the obligations? What obligations are there for the affordable housing to remain affordable housing? Or is there an option for them to just raise the rates once they're done? Because they're not really owners anymore, they're just developers. So that's another question that I had. And then third thing is, thank you so much for those pictures. Because I had same questions about what does, you know, hundred units per acre look like? So they were really, really helpful. So that's three things I just wanted to ask about and say.
Great. And so I will attempt to address your questions, but in reverse order. Because I don't know as much about the service end, but I do know about the development end a little bit. And so a couple of things to keep in mind. First of all, remember, this is only phase one of our Housing Strategies Project. And we try to group projects or group strategies together that were linked or that dealt with the same geographic areas or the same types of development or the same zoning districts. And so this group of strategies deals with sort of a finite area and these these three issues. But we have a lot of other things that we are working on in other areas of the county, one of which I'll talk about in a minute, the single-family zones. And the hope is not, the hope is to not shove all of, back of a more glamorous way to say it. Not to shove all of the affordable housing in one place. These are the strategies that we're working on right now. And we would like to see more affordable housing in this place, but also in others. And so this is part of a larger project to look at really much bigger area. And then in terms of a guarantee for affordability, so so yes, the way that the affordable housing bonus would work is that the way it does work is that it has to be guaranteed for a certain period of time. Generally, when somebody, when a developer is building housing for a sixty percent or below of area median income, they need additional funding. It's often tax credit funding, and that comes with stipulations that it must remain affordable. I believe it's for thirty years, but there is a timeframe put on that funding. And so there are, they can't just build it and then raise the rents. And then in terms of services, it's a little out of my wheelhouse. The Housing Authority and Health Housing and Human Services has been doing a lot of work on the service end. There are a lot of recommendations that came out of the task force related to services provided. And there is a lot of talk about wraparound services and services tied to housing. And so I know that they are doing work on that. We have a representative from the Housing Authority on our working group and will certainly continue to work with them. But I I quite, I mean, our zoning code doesn't really handle services. That's something that we'd have to to coordinate with between us and the developer and the Housing Authority to to see if there's ways to incentivize that kind of service provision within the development.
So Commissioner Pack, can I just follow up a little bit? Were you thinking along the lines? There's, you know, there's, there's, I guess, different layers here, right? There's, is there funding for services? And the answer is there's about to be more funding than there used to be because of the new affordable house. But I'm not going to call it the right thing, but supportive housing services money that exists that's going to start being collected in 2021. And that is just, I think, kind of in the planning stage of the county, developing a committee to advise them and all that, and not happening through our department at all. But we're perfectly aware, and Karen may know more, actually, she can also potentially speak to this. But that's sort of the funding piece. There's the sort of regulatory, in the zoning code, do we allow? So for instance, I've thought about that sometimes because I don't know exactly what these services all look like. If it's if it's stuff that's actually like located on the site or is it that people are coming to the site to provide the service and leaving? If that were the case, there's no problem. If we're providing the services onsite and they're actually there with offices and things, there may be some question about whether our code accommodates that as well as it needs to. I mean, I think potentially through accessory use and that kind of thing, but it's something we we ought to look at. Then the third piece is, are we doing something to incentivize it? And I don't know if that's where your question was headed, to think, well, you know, maybe we don't grant the affordable housing bonus at the same level to a project that doesn't provide so-called wraparound services or something. I mean, that would be something you could certainly, if that's if that's what you're asking, and I'm not sure if you are.
And this is all new to me, but I do know that when, as, so I wasn't suggesting that any of those as much as just having some sort of office spaces and or some form of spaces, like, you know, we see developments anymore with the ground floor being storefront and then the above spaces being residential units. And I think as simple as that, where service, the ground floor units can be allowed to be something other than residential units. And therefore, you allow for services to be present, not to say that you have to make it that way. So that was one thing that I was thinking about. And then I wasn't even thinking about the finance part of it. So that's something, you know, another facet that you guys are probably much more familiar with than I am. But I remember hearing a story a long time ago about a single mom who had children who was needing to get a assistance from, you know, different types of human services. And she had to go from the courthouse to the to the different agencies that provided these different services. And they were located just throughout the whole county, different, you know, areas. And this poor woman had three children that she couldn't really go to the courthouse with because she's got all these kids with her. And so there was an idea that could we place all these service-oriented businesses or offices in one location so that these people that are using these services can go there and have it all be available rather than having to drive or take the bus or to, you know, to get to those places? So that's the story that this lady told me years and years ago, kind of stuck in my mind when you all were talking about this. And and I was just thinking about it, just as simple as, can we make a location even within the area, even if it's not within the building, somewhere close by so that the patrons of those housing units can get to those places without having to, you know, take buses and and trains and whatnot? So again, you guys have thought about it a lot more than I have already. So I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
It's a great question.
So I have a math problem for Martha.
My favorite.
I guess my my question is, do we have a numeric target of affordable housing units that we are trying to achieve over a certain period of time? And do we have any? And do we have any sense of what these strategies, how many units these strategies will produce? And whether these strategies are likely to help us achieve the goal or exceed it?
Oh, Brian, I'm so glad you asked that question. The answer to the first part of that is partially, it depends on who you talk to. And I'm being a little bit flipped. So there are some numbers out there, you know, our board has adopted a goal of, and I'm going to completely mess this up, Jennifer. They've adopted, they've adopted a goal of of producing about fifteen hundred, I want to say, units of affordable housing in the next three to five years. Some of it is sort of allocated over to the Housing Authority because they actually build housing. Seven hundred of those units have been identified as ones that we in planning need to find. And it's an interesting question because we don't actually build housing and we can't make people build housing. But what we are trying to do is identify strategies that would allow for more housing and potentially incentivize that housing. The Housing Needs Analysis that was done in 2019 actually found a a deficit of residentially zoned land for the projected housing need of something, you know, close to five thousand units in the urban area. But they only looked at residential land. They didn't look at commercial land. And so my, my logical leap is if there's not residential land, developers are going to start, are going to start looking at commercial land because multifamily development is allowed. I don't know if we really need to find five thousand or, you know, space for five thousand units, but it is a lot. There's definitely a deficit. So part of the analysis that we are going to be working on moving forward through GIS largely is to look at and to make some estimates about how many additional units this could produce. We don't have those numbers yet for, for these particular strategies. But we are going to look at it based on some assumptions from metro about underutilized and other buildable lands in the commercial areas. And we're going to start putting together those numbers in the next month or two. So I don't have an answer for you yet on that one.
So that, this fueled a couple more questions and an overall comment, which is, you know, this is obviously a lot of a goal, right? We, we need affordable housing in the county. But from a planning perspective, it would be really nice to know what is our target? Are we likely to achieve it? And, you know, i- if we do our job really well, you could foresee some, this could potentially produce some problems on, on the other end of it, right? Like, if we end up, you know, we, we have a limited number of amount of commercial space in the property in, in the county as well, which is a challenge if we're using a bunch of, if we're converting commercial land to residential, that could be a problem down the road. And, and I guess my questions around that are, is there a working definition of affordable housing that we are all working from? Because I think that can be defined in a lot of different ways. And then, yeah, I, again, I, I think it would be really helpful just to have, to have a better understanding of what our goal is and how these strategies work together to meet that goal.
Well, thank you. And, and I, I hear you. And I don't think that these particular strategies are, you know, they're, again, they are a piece, a piece of the whole bigger strategy to produce, to, to affect the housing supply in the urban area. And it's not all going to be affordable housing. Some of it, like the Houseville 2001, we're looking at as middle housing, which is affordable more to the average working person. It's, and, and so the, there's needs across the whole spectrum of housing types and affordability. And this is only one piece of it. So, so yes, I mean, and they get it, we, we do know that there is also a limited supply of commercial and industrial land. And that's certainly, you know, this business displacement is certainly one of the considerations that we are thinking about as we move forward with these. But we also, you also need to remember, right now, you can do mixed use. You could do the commercial on the ground floor and housing on the upper floors. We don't have a lot of that in Clackamas County. I think we planners envisioned more of this, especially near the light rail stations and would like to see more of that. And so we are not, we haven't had a conversation about requiring mixed use. I think that conversation happened in the Fuller Road Station area a little bit, and I think we backed off of the requiring mixed use. But we certainly allow it and we'd like to encourage it and see it. And that hopefully then would take care of or address, reduce the amount of business displacement and also could open up spaces for service providers.
Right. That's helpful. Thank you.
It's not Tom unmute. Oh.
Well, mine was up first. Sorry, Tom. One of the thoughts in reading your packet, very, very well put together, was, I mean, obviously we're dealing with unincorporated Clackamas County. In this strategy plan and this monster that we're trying to eat one bite at a time, how much coordination with all the cities that are in Clackamas County? Are cities going through this exact process? And is there just lots and lots and lots of like coordinating or not so much? Or just kind of was curious about that side of it as well?
So at this point, for these particular strategies, we haven't done a lot of coordinating with cities. Cities are, are all working on their own housing issues and housing strategies, partly because we have this Houseville 2001 coming up that all, all the cities in the metro area are going to have to address. And there also was Houseville 2003 that the 2019 legislature passed. And the cities actually are going to be required to do housing production strategies. And I am not, again, super familiar with those because the unincorporated area doesn't have to do them. But the cities are all going to have to do a pretty comprehensive look at their housing and come up with strategies to, to address affordability, to address some of these things that we're talking about. I don't, there will be some coordination with those, but it's still early on in that process. There is currently a whole lot of coordination with the cities as it relates to the middle housing in the Houseville 2001.
And so, I mean, what do we have? Sixteen cities or nineteen? It's like a super lot. I can't remember Clackamas County, but.
So I believe Clackamas County has sixteen cities. Well, all are parts of sixteen cities. Or is it fifteen? No.
And I mean, isn't that sort of like everybody's recreating the wheel? I mean, is there not any value in working as a group? Like all cities and unincorporated Clackamas County as a team or, I don't know. I mean.
I mean, it honestly gets back to my question, right? If, if we don't understand all these other jurisdictions and what units they're putting on the ground, how do we understand what our kind of overall goal and target and how we're getting there, right? It's, it's a bigger problem than just unincorporated Clackamas County.
Well, that's very true. And we do coordinate with the cities, but, you know, each city has its own sets of rules and regulations and zoning. And I think learning from what other cities have done, for those that have gone through similar processes, I mean, that was part of our initial research just to see what other jurisdictions do because we don't want to recreate the wheel. I mean, if we don't have to. And so we like to look around and see what other, what other cities are working on and what they're could say and call them up and ask them what's working and what's not. I don't think that it's really feasible to actually do a, I don't even know how many urban cities there are because there must be like twelve urban cities and us to do that sort of a coordinated effort. I mean, we all have very different rules and different communities and, you know, different zoning districts.
Thanks, Martha. Tom, did you have a question?
Yeah. I know this isn't part of the, necessarily part of the strategy, but it, but it seems like the, the emphasis is all about affordable housing that people can rent. How does, what are we doing to ensure that there's affordable homes or condos or whatever that people can own as well? And, and the reason that comes to mind, my, my daughter's in the middle of trying to buy a home right now and the market is just nuts. What's going on? Because there's a, of the limited supply. And it seems to me that's just as important to be thinking about as places for people to rent. And I'm just curious, is that planned to this at all? Or is that just a totally a separate issue?
Uh, no, it's not a separate issue. We, we would allow in any of these multifamily developments, an ownership or rental model. If they wanted to condominiumize, we don't, I believe, have a lot of condominiums in Clackamas County. But it's not because they're not allowed. And so I don't know what it would take. I don't know enough about sort of the financial ins and outs of, of why you would develop a rental product versus a for-sale product, but you certainly could. And I think that some of the, some of the sort of entry home, entry-level home and for-sale product conversation is really naturally going to fall more in the, the middle housing conversation.
Okay.
It doesn't have to. It certainly doesn't have to. I just, I, I don't know that there's anything we could do in our zoning code that would incentivize one sort of, you know, ownership versus rental, or if we'd even want to. We certainly allow them.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Murph?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up what I brought up during the business meeting last week with the commissioners. And that was to, a way to reward long-term rentals. What's to prevent these affordable and middle-income housing issues to not end up going to a short-term rental? Like they, you know, it's going crazy up on the mountain right now. And they're, instead of penalizing that, because this is enables people to live, maybe we should reward somehow to maintain a long-term rental. It was just an idea.
I don't, I don't have anything enlightening to, to say to that. I, I hear you. I don't know what the answer to that is.
I have a question, Martha. What what does the, what's the definition that you give to the developer as to what affordable housing is? What is their guidelines for, you know, when they develop a, a place? Just find, tell me what that is. What, what, what do you tell them that they have to do?
Um, so, and Brian asked this too. I didn't, I didn't answer you. I apologize. Typically, when we are talking about affordable housing, when we're talking about density bonuses and things like that, it's housing that's available at sixty percent or below of the area media, median income. And so some units are deeply affordable or for very low-income households. And those tend to be the ones that are at thirty percent of the area's median income and below. And to get rents low enough to be affordable to those households, the development almost always, if not always, has to be subsidized with one of these other funding sources that guarantees the longer-term affordability.
Do you happen to have any actual numbers of what, some examples of those?
No, but I can look it up really quick.
And Martha, how long do they have to keep the, the value of that at that sixty percent?
Well, again, it depends on the funding. The one that I'm familiar with is thirty years, but there's probably other
Okay.
funding sources where that would be different. I, I don't know.
Possibly in the past, but a question about current. Has, has there been, or is there a plan to gather developers of all sizes, shapes and colors and ask them, what would incent you to help us make these goals? What is it that holds you back? What would drive you forward? You know, is it a bonus? Is it a requirement? Is it a, I'm just curious if that process has been gone through or i- if that's a part of the plan?
Uh, well, we have been doing that through this project. We've been talking to developers, architects, affordable housing developers, senior housing developers, housing advocates. The Park Avenue Station area project has also been doing that. And so we are, we're trying, we're trying to get those, those answers directly from developers. And, and others that would be in the know. I'm still looking for, let's see, area median.
Martha, while you look that up, let me just circle back, Tammy, to your question on the inclusionary zoning. So the limits are that, first of all, the county could only require up to twenty percent of the units in a project to be affordable. So we couldn't say a hundred. It would be maximum of twenty percent. Can only be applied to multifamily structures that contain at least twenty housing units. So, you know, you do a bunch of fourplexes that wouldn't, wouldn't do it. But if the building had twenty units, we have to provide an option for developers to pay a fee in lieu of developing the affordable units. So then presumably that money would go, you know, to affordable housing through some other mechanism. And then we have to offer them some sort of financial incentive, which there are some choices. And that's not for the people who pay the fee, but for the people who actually develop the affordable units. The choices are some sort of whole or partial fee waiver or reduction, whole or partial waivers of system development charges or impact fees set by the county, financing of some kind, property tax exemption. So there's some options, but the bottom line is the county would have to put some money on the table essentially in order to do it. And then the question would be, you know, in a place like Portland with the volume of multifamily that gets built, it makes some sense for us. I just don't know. When you're talking about structures that have to have at least twenty units and, you know, only twenty percent of those. I don't know how much work we would move the needle on something like that. I mean, it's an option. It's, it is like Martha said, I think it's had some mixed results in Portland and it does tend to be very controversial, but that doesn't mean it's not worth looking at. It's just a recognition that that.
Typically. Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay.
Given that cost of construction is going up, seems like all the time. And what you just said, sounds like there's going to be some type of incentive given to the developer in the form of maybe tax breaks or something like that. It appears for me that we, the taxpayer, are going to be taking the hit for it. Is that, am I mistaken?
I mean, I think generally, and I, again, I am not an expert. Martha knows more than I do about all the different programs for affordable housing development. But I think it's true that a number of them rely upon some sort of public subsidy, whether that's in the form of actual funding or it's in the form of waiving certain things, whether it's property taxes or whether it's fees. I mean, that is fairly common that, yes, the, the, the public in one way or another often provides a subsidy. But there are not what, Martha, there are nonprofit housing developers, but I don't know how they're, when they're tapping into programs, those are often federal or state benefits that are coming to them in order to do that development is my understanding.
Yeah, there, there are programs that they can get sort of gap, what you call gap funding for. Not full funding for a property for a development, but you can get funding for, and it's not public monies. But there are some publicly subsidized, especially when you get into the lowest incomes, which the Housing Authority is, is generally developing publicly subsidized housing. But it may be federal money. So I have some numbers. So I have some numbers. In this area, for a four-person household, 60% of the median income is $55,260 annually for the household income. And so the income limits vary based on your household size. For example, at 60%, a four-person household is earning $44,220. Whereas, you know, 50% of the areas median income for a two-person household is $36,850. So there's a, a whole table. But when you're up in that 60%, I mean, that is, you know, people working and people working at minimum, not even minimum wage jobs, unless there's more than one wage earner, you know, people with decent jobs.
And to be affordable, you have to spend less than 30% of your income on your housing and utility bills. And so at 60% AMI, you're looking at 30% of that for housing. And that's in the background of the housing issues paper as well.
I guess for me, I'm just still trying to get ahead, you know, my head around what's the actual rent would be. In other words, the people I know who work multiple minimum wage jobs, they live, six people crammed in a two-bedroom apartment. And it's because each one can only afford a couple hundred dollars a month for rent. And so I'm wondering, what will these places rent for? Will they rent for 300 a month, 500 a month? You get up higher than 800 a month, that's no longer affordable for the people that I think we're trying to help.
Well, and it, it, the, the rent is going to depend on the unit size and it's gonna, gonna depend on which affordability level the developer is, is, is putting the unit at. And so it would be basically 30% of, of that time divided by 12. Whoops, I did it backwards. And so it's, it still is rent and it's still gonna, it's still gonna vary. But there is a need for housing affordable at, at a lot of different, different levels. And so we have no control over the price that the developer puts on the housing. But we would have control over any incentives to create more housing at sort of, at say, the lower income levels. You know, we could have a different parking ratio or a different housing bonus or even a different maximum density if you're targeting 50% or below median income or below rather than 60%. So it would be households earning, you know, $32,000 to $46,000. And so it's, we're looking for ideas and we're, we're looking to see where your comfort level is with, with these different options to, to see what the, the, the right for now answer is, as we move forward with trying to craft some code amendments.
We have a question from Carrie and then Stephen. And we're kind of an hour and 45 minutes into this. So I, I don't think we're done with the topic after questions, are we, Martha? We have a bit.
Well, I'm going to move on to talking about House Bill 2001, which is the middle housing bill. And so I want to wrap up this discussion about these phase one strategies, because then I'm gonna talk about that. And then we have a whole nother conversation about what's going on in the short-term rental world.
So if Carrie and then Stephen, please.
So I'll ask my question real quick. With the current status of work from home going more into becoming more of a norm, do we have, do we need to do another inventory to see whether we can convert some of these office spaces to housing units, maybe? I don't know. I, it's a wild idea, but I see lots of vacant offices coming here pretty soon.
No, I mean, I think that's going to be something interesting. We'll have to see how it plays out with what developers want to do moving forward. Because for the most part, where those office buildings are, housing is allowed. And so it, it's going to be market-driven. And, and then maybe what we see happening to some extent. I don't know.
That's a really good point with COVID. There's just a lot of businesses that aren't going back or minimally. So there could already be a lot of, that's a great idea, Carrie. And then Stephen? And then I, then I believe Murph has a question. Oh, and then Brian, okay.
Thank you. So the affordable housing, I, I learned a lot about this about two years ago, maybe three years ago. A developer had land next to Milwaukee High School and the structures were older and they wanted to renovate. And so they came to three taxing agencies seeking to do tax abatement, which made them eligible to get loans so that they actually can do the business model. And through that process, I learned that, you know, some loans had 30-year deed restrictions, some had 50. And a certain percentage of the housing units themselves had to be the definition of beneath market pricing. And a lot of them run programs to help families get the support they need to get back onto their feats, onto their feet, not plural feats. And, and so, you know, I very much support this because there's families in all different needs. And the developer is locked in. They cannot sell the property in three years. They can, but that, those deed restrictions follow it. And so, a- a- and it's tied to a federal program. They cannot just say, oh, I'm going to now get rid of somebody else and now rent it for four times the price. I suppose they probably could, but then they'd be penalized, you know, 25 times the price. So it's a very well-done program that protects the investment and the funding that helps it to be done. And so there are going to be a lot of cities that want to talk with the fire department, the school districts, because they need to get a certain percentage of taxing agents to agree to the tax abatement so that these new, new construction can be done. And the project that I'm talking about is just gorgeous. It's sitting right next to Milwaukee High School. And it, it is a gem to look at as far as a success thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. And then Murph and then Brian.
Yeah, Martha, is there a restriction on the incentive housing? Does it have to be built within the plot plan? Or is there a mediation that is, that it could go outside the area that's under construction or developed?
Not sure I understand your question, Murph.
Okay, let's say you're
Sorry.
You're building so many homes and you're receiving an incentive of, you can build another eight homes. Do those eight homes have to be built on-site? Or can they be built elsewhere?
Well, currently, the way, the way our affordable housing bonus works, they would have to be built either on-site or you actually could use it to get an extra lot or two in a subdivision, although I am not sure that anyone's ever done that because I'm not sure how you guarantee the affordability of, of a, of a for-sale house moving forward. But in theory, it can be done. I don't know. I mean, maybe that's an option that we need to look at. If they're guaranteeing to, they're going to put the affordable units somewhere else, would we still consider that an affordable housing bonus? I don't know.
I was
In a noodle.
Comparing it to a land bank, land mitigation bank where you can buy credits, supplement your wetland that you're taking away.
I'll have to think about that.
But I was just gonna kind of, Martha, I get the sense that you're, you're trying to get from us, like, what do we support, what do we have concerns with, right? And I, I'll just kind of, for the, to, you know, there's, I have a really open mind about all of these strategies, right? And, you know, I, I fully support what we're trying to do. And I don't have any lack of comfort with any of the strategies. I, I think what I do have some lack of comfort is this sense that we're throwing darts at a dartboard and that we don't really have a sense of how many units this is going to produce and at what levels. And I hope that as we move forward, we can give some thought to what is our, you know, because it's just the, it's not how we typically do planning, right? We usually are thinking, what's the problem? What's the solution we need? What, you know, what are the strategies to achieve these targets? And I don't, I don't, maybe, maybe I just haven't dug into this far enough yet, but I don't have a sense that that's there in the county. And from a planning perspective, that really worries me. We're, we're, we're talking about some pretty significant changes and we don't know if it's actually going to solve the problem. We don't know if it's going to come far short or far exceeded. And I, I think we've got to figure that out before this road that may be reversible in some, some respects. And, and that's not to say that I don't fully, we, we obviously need to get affordable housing on the ground. But I also think that this body has a responsibility to, to think about what are the impacts of that? And, and are we going to actually achieve what we say we're trying to achieve as a result of what we're doing?
So maybe just something to think about. You know, I think there, that there's a lot of, there's several strategies here and a lot of different ways to attack them. And one of the questions really is, are we, are we just interested in creating as much housing as we can at all price points, wherever we have the capability of doing that? Or is this a more targeted approach about affordable housing? And when we say affordable, I mean, like at certain AMI you know, points where you're getting some sort of subsidy. Those are to some extent different questions. And I think when you look at these strategies, we're saying, okay, do we just take the maximum density off for all housing in commercial areas? Or are we saying, no, we're, you know, maybe we raise it a little bit for all developments, but we really want to incent the affordable ones in a different way. And I think that's, that's a policy question for the planning commission to think about. I think we can try to crunch the numbers and we can talk to developers, but I don't know, Brian, that we're going to be able to answer your question. What I can tell you is that there's a study out there. And again, we could, maybe the methodology isn't perfect, but it says that Oregon under-built by 155,000 housing units over a 15-year period. It doesn't matter what we do. We are not going to solve the problem all by ourselves, but I don't think we're going to overshoot it. Like everything we do to help with supply is going to help with the issues Tom is talking about, about affordability, the market being overheated. There's no supply. Our housing needs analysis says that we are 5,000 units short in unincorporated Clackamas County for the next 20 years, just unincorporated Clackamas County. And, you know, you can shuffle it around, right? If West Lynn builds more, we can build less. If Sandy builds more, maybe. But the bottom line is, we need more at all price levels. So anything you do, any of these strategies will help.
Right, and so I, I get that. And then, but then the, the other part of that is, okay, let's say our strategy is to maximize the amount of housing. What are the costs of that? What are the impacts? I mean, and that's not, that's not, that's not been part of this conversation, right? And I think that we need to understand what that is going to be in order to make a good decision moving forward. You know, as much as I, I agree that we need to put affordable housing on, on the ground, right? There's reasons that these, these regulations and ordinance have been there for a long period of time. And I think we need to know what the impacts are going to be before we just take them away.
Well, and I agree. And I think that very much is part of this conversation, actually. That was a, that was a large part of the conversation that the working group had in their second meeting and even a little bit in the first meeting. And so, so right now, these options are, are broad. And we really were, we're, we're at the point where, where we're kind of done brainstorming. And this is what we've come up with. And now we need to narrow them down and figure out the path that we want to take. And at the same time, we are going to do some analysis to see in terms of unit production, what that's going to look, what, what the option would look like for us. Or maybe if, you know, we're not sure between two options, we look at the unit production for one or the other and then also weigh potential downsides. And I just, I keep coming back to this one about just removing maximum density because that one really struck me, the work, that, that's something that the working group was very concerned about and what the impact would be to land prices and how that would then, whether that would displace businesses and people. And if it would actually prevent affordable housing developers from coming in and building because it was too expensive then. And so those considerations will go into the final answer. I don't know. I mean, we, if there's any other things that come to mind right now in terms of potential negative long-term implications of any of these strategies, we'd like to know because we do want to consider that.
So as you're boiling this down, Martha, and really just to dovetail on Brian's question or comment, as we boil this down and say, okay, like, let's say we're super against just no maximums or supportive of no maximums or, you know, as painful as the parking ratios really reducing those would be, are we heading down the path of saying, all right, let's, we boiled it down to this picture. By doing this, we, we should experience 800 houses. And by doing this, we should experience another 200. By doing this, we should, you know, see the development of another 200. So now we're at 1,200 homes. May not be 15, but I mean, will we hopefully get closer to that, that kind of, if this is what we do, this is what we imagine the outcome to be with what of the science exists on this?
I mean, yes, in a perfect world, I'd love to be able to target, like, be able to identify how many homes. I think it's going to be more of a, we think it could generate, you know, 50 to 150 additional homes. I mean, it's not, it, the market is still the one that's providing the housing. And so we will have to make some assumptions and, but we will, we will have ranges certainly that we could identify and.
Would be helpful. This would be helpful.
Yes, that would help to know, you know, if we go to this extreme, boy, howdy, we're going to get darn close to that 1,500. But are we willing to live with the impacts, whether that be transportation or services or whatever? And then if we go with this very, a little more restrictive, now we're not even 50% of the way there. So it will help us, guide us on how liberal or conservative we need to be in this process. Because I agree with Brian. Boy, once the horses are out of the barn, you know, you shut the gate all you want, it's over. I mean, it's, it's done.
It's hard to, it's hard to do a cost benefit analysis on a hope, right? You know, if, if we're just hoping for more housing, that's really hard to get your head around. But if we have some sense of, you know, generally, this is amount, that the benefit that we're going to get in return for, for something, it's easier to make a policy decision with.
Yes. Okay.
Even considering water and sewer in these areas. This has to be upgraded also.
Yeah, it's water, sewer and transportation for sure, obviously. But in the commercial areas, thank goodness, there's usually a relatively good supply, but.
Yeah.
Okay, you know what? We are sitting at almost eight. So a couple of things. I know we can all like just turn, stop video and use mute if we need a couple minute break. Do we want to just kind of use that? Or do we want to actually stop for five minutes and take a break or?
That's up to you all.
It, it's just been an hour and a half and I, I don't want to hold you hostage. But if you want to just hit mute and stop video and take a couple of minutes, go for it. And we can keep moving along. That's fine with me. And hey, nobody's leaving, so let's keep going. Thanks, Martha.
I'm trying to make myself smaller here again. How do I do this? There we go. All right. So moving along, phase two of the housing strategies project is coming soon. Phase two is actually going to contain three strategies. And the, the biggest one is addressing implementation of House Bill 2001, which I'm going to talk a little bit about in the next several slides. Generally speaking, it is, it was a bill that requires a number of cities in the state and the unincorporated area of Clackamas County to allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes in urban single-family zones. While we're doing that, we're also going to look at our codes and make sure that we are compliant with Senate Bill 1051, which deals with having clear and objective standards for housing. And then we're going to be digging into our comprehensive plan a little bit and possibly talking about some of the policies in there and how they relate to rezoning in these urban single-family residential zones. And it's a lot. We, I'm not really going to talk about these, the strategies two and three today. We haven't really begun. We haven't really begun to work on those, it is coming. But House Bill 2001 is just an interesting animal. And I thought I would give you a little bit of an update, because I have been involved as an alternate on the rules, on the rulemaking, the RAC, the Rules Advisory Committee for the state. And this is something that's on a lot of people's minds. And so I just wanted to give you an overview of what's been going on with that and what we're likely to see moving forward. So basically requires unincorporated area of Clackamas County to allow a duplex on every lot that is zoned to allow a detached, single family dwelling. And I listed the zones there. It's all, it's our low density residential zones. The ones that start with VR are special zones over in Sunnyside Village area. Then House Bill 2001 requires all the other middle housing types in areas zoned to allow detached, single family homes, so in all of these zones. So it's very clear that a duplex has to be allowed on every lot. And it's very clear that all of the other types have to be allowed in areas. And as you can probably expect, this conversation of what is an area has taken up a lot of time at the Rulemaking Advisory Committee meetings. And I'm not sure it's even been totally resolved yet. So it's important to note that this bill, despite what a lot of news articles seem to say at the time, it doesn't outlaw single family homes. It doesn't change anything about allowing accessory dwelling units on these lots, they're already allowed. You could still come in and build a detached, single family home on any of these lots. You don't have to build a duplex or anything else. And so the deadline for us to change our code and comply with House Bill 2001 is June 30th, 2022, which is going to come up faster than, than we, any of us imagined. So middle housing is defined, in House Bill 2001, as all of these various housing types. Again, I'm visual, I kind of wanted to get a sense for what all of these would look like. These are from different sources, but there's cottage clusters, townhomes, and then, you know, the triplex, quads, duplex. That's what they are. And so the Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, initiated rulemaking in 2019 with a couple areas of focus, creating a model code and minimum compliance rules that we and the other cities who have to implement House Bill 2001 have to comply with. The model code is something that we could use, or we could use pieces of it. Or if we were a jurisdiction that is unable to or declines to adopt something by that due date, the model code is then your code. It's, you have to implement the model code. And so we in Clackamas County don't think we're going to do that. We're going to try to do our own work, but we're going to pull pieces probably from the model code and then just make sure we stay within this minimum compliance. The other areas of focus for the rulemaking, I'm not really going to talk much about today, but one of them has to do with infrastructure-based time extension requests or IBTHERS. And that is a process that a jurisdiction could go through to identify areas that really couldn't accommodate anything more than the duplex and identify ways to remedy that and then request an extension for the time period that it would take to remedy those infrastructure deficiencies. And then House Bill 2003, the Housing Production Strategies, I mentioned it briefly earlier. It's only regardless cities, and so I'm not going to talk about that. So there was a Rules Advisory Committee, several technical advisory committees. Chris Story, the Assistant Director of West, some of you may know, he was a RAC member. Excuse me, and I was an alternate. I also was a member of the Technical Advisory Committee for the Model Code. And I like to call it my McTac, it's the Mc, that was on the McTac. And we had nine RAC meetings, eight Tac meetings and a number of other meetings outside of that. It's been, it's been a huge effort. Not unexpectedly, several sort of major issues that kept coming up were parking. And there's, there was definitely a push among the Rules Advisory Committee to reduce the number, or to minimize the number of off-street parking spaces a jurisdiction can require. And where it looks like it's landing generally is that for all of these middle housing types, the duplexes, tries, quads, cottage clusters, townhomes, that jurisdictions are not going to be able to require more than one space per unit. Doesn't mean you couldn't allow for more if a developer wants to build it, but we couldn't require it. And so I believe that's probably where it's going to land when this is fully adopted. There's been a big push from a lot of local jurisdictions for more flexibility in the rules. And it's been an interesting balance. There is a lot of concern, you know, a lot, a lot of the reason for this House Bill was to try to figure out ways to, to eliminate exclusive, exclusivity in neighborhoods and try to fix some zoning wrongs of the past and segregation. And there is definitely a concern among RAC members and among the state, the commission, the LCDC, who's reviewing this about jurisdictions being able to get around. If, if too much, too much flexibility is given, then jurisdictions would find ways to get around it and, and just continue on with these exclusionary practices in zoning. And so it's been a balance. You know, it's been a balance of allowing jurisdictions flexibility to fit these, these regulations into their codes while making sure that it's not too much flexibility, that, you know, something actually can get done to, to change some of these areas that historically have been exclusive. And so then there's the in-areas conversation, and I could talk about that for days and I'm not going to. I think it's pretty safe to say, the way the regulations are moving forward is the easiest path for a jurisdiction would be to essentially allow all of the middle housing types in nearly all of the areas of your jurisdiction, subject to perhaps a minimum lot size, which the rules have identified. There are other, other ways to sort of whittle away areas where you wouldn't allow particular things, like for example cottage clusters. But you would have to, there would be a demonstration that you still are, you're still, you're still would be able to, or your jurisdiction still allows a certain percentage of, of the lots within the jurisdiction could be built with one of those housing types. And there's also a performance metric about the distribution. And so it's, you're not shoving all of the middle housing in one particular neighborhood and excluding another. And so it's been a really difficult conversation. It is nearly done, the state rulemaking. The last hearing in front of the commission is this Thursday morning for the final reading and public hearing for, for the rules for the large cities. Medium cities, some of the smaller cities that only are required to have duplexes already have their rules adopted, that was done this summer. And the rules for the infrastructure-based time extensions were also adopted this summer. And in September was the first hearing for the larger cities. And the unincorporated county area falls into this larger cities category. And so I expect that something will be adopted this week. Under House Bill 2001, I believe the, the commission has until the end of this calendar year to adopt something. So if it's not done in November, it's going to be done shortly thereafter. And so the county's process to comply with the House Bill 2001, we haven't really started. I mentioned we did receive a grant to hire consultants or consultants to assist in the community outreach. And so we are working on that hiring process right now. And we're going to, we hope to begin our community outreach and initial code work early this coming year. If it turns out the county is going to request any infrastructure-based time extensions, that application would be due to the state by the end of June next year. And as we work our way through our code amendments, we're expecting to have adoption related to this late 2021, early 2022, hopefully well ahead of the deadline of June 2022. And that is my spiel about House Bill 2001. It has been a difficult rulemaking process, although I feel like they maybe all are. And I, I think that there's definitely some good things and bad things that have come out of it. I think that we will have pretty limited flexibility in the choices that we at the county are going to be able to make for implementing middle housing in our, in our single family zones. A lot of it is going to, a lot, a lot of the parameters are very, very narrow that we have to work with them. And so this website here is our Housing Strategies webpage. We've had this up for about a year now. It has a lot, a lot of information, has information about meetings that we've had, has a lot of background information. And as we move forward through the phases, it's where we will continue to update and post anything we have moving forward. That is it for now for housing. Does anyone have any questions about House Bill 2001 that I might be able to answer?
One question.
Yeah.
What about the Planned Community Act? Isn't that a roadblock for either ways?
The Planned Community Act, I'm not familiar with it.
Planned Community Act is, it backs up homeowners association, gated communities, closed communities, very similar to timberline rim, so to speak. You know, they already have their own restrictions, they have their own building codes. You're going to have to override those, sounds to me.
So that's a really good question. There was some, there has been some conversation about communities that have CCNRs that actually prohibit middle housing, the various types of middle housing. There are communities out there that do. And what the legislation said is that moving forward, you cannot prohibit it through, through community covenants and restrictions. But it doesn't change anything about past, the ones that exist now, except that if they change anything about them, and I don't know what the threshold level is of changing anything about them, they are no longer allowed to have this restriction that would prevent how, this type of housing. And so, yes, that's out there. I don't think that this rulemaking is going to resolve anything around that. I think it's very likely that you will see some conversations about that at the next legislative session. I think there are teams, somebody, some folks are teaming that up. Where it goes, I don't know.
I have a question. Well, first of all, thank you for the staff to, for the presentation. It, it's great to learn about House Bill 2001. But I, I try to play it in my head as far as pulling in an example. So if you could help me better understand unincorporated Clackamas County, an R5, a landowner who currently has a house in an R5, what, what would they be, would they be allowed to do a, a second house or a cottage? Or what is available to them based on this House Bill?
Well, that's a good question. Currently, what's available to them would be a house and an accessory dwelling unit. It could be attached or detached. An accessory dwelling unit has size limits. What we know for sure would be available now is you could have a duplex instead of a house and an, and an accessory dwelling unit. The duplex, there would be no size limit to, to either unit. It is likely that you also could have a triplex, where the R5 might not be allowed to have some of the other unit types or housing types as if there's a minimum lot size. The way that the rules are constructed right now is that we're not required, or we, we can require a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet for quadplexes, cottage clusters, townhomes are just different. And so it may not meet the size limit to have a cottage, a cottage cluster or a quadplex. But if it did meet that size limit, it could potentially do all of those housing types. It's going to depend largely on how our codes are written also. But at a minimum, on five, on a 5,000 square foot lot, which I'm assuming it's just a standard R5 lot, it, it would be allowed to be developed with a duplex or likely with a triplex under this House Bill.
Thank you.
I raised my hand. I guess, just thinking about this is, you know, it probably won't have a dramatic effect on a lot of existing neighborhoods. But I could see where new developments may not build single family homes anymore now, because the multi, the duplex, the triplex will be more profitable to them. And so they're, would, in all of a sudden now create no opportunities for someone to buy a, a single family home. Has that been discussed at all? Or I, I just, I could just see where that's, where that's going to lead, what that could lead to?
Well, yes and no. And again, there's a lot of conversation about how do you get more ownership opportunities in these various housing types? You know, it's condominium, condominiumizing, which I feel like a lot of, I, I don't know that much about, but I feel like a lot of people think there's financial barriers to that. Certainly, townhomes are on an individual lot, they could be sold separately, like attached row houses. And those tend to be at a lower price point generally. And I, I think that a developer still is going to build what the market wants, which in a lot of cases is detached, single family housing. But, but you're right, I mean, I, we're not going to see a lot of change in the existing neighborhoods. It's going to be a slow rate of infill. And I think initially what we're going to see a lot of are conversions to duplexes and triplexes. But I don't know what it's going to look like moving forward. We, the unincorporated area, don't have a lot of vacant land to see what new products are going to be built on them. We're going to mostly see infill.
Any other questions? Awesome, Martha, thank you. Sounds like it's been quite a process.
I've been a little busy. It's actually been quite interesting, but a little mind numbing too. So that's, I mean, I'm not done talking at you, but I'm going to pivot to my presentation about short-term rentals if we're ready to go there.
Okay, I'm seeing nodding heads, so yes, please.
Okay, so you cannot, did I stop sharing? You can't see my screen anymore, right?
No, there's no presentation up right now.
Okay. All right. Come on, short-term rentals. Take a deep breath and like turn my brain in a different direction. Short-term rentals. We talked to you all about short-term rentals, about a project that we're working on relating to potentially clarifying where short-term rentals are and are not allowed and creating a regulatory program. And I can't even remember off the top of my head when it was that we talked to you. I feel like it was back in January, but it was probably before that. And so we are continuing to work on this project. And short-term rentals amendments include amendments to the county code and would also include some amendments to the zoning and development code. And so just a little bit of sort of background for those of you who maybe didn't, weren't involved in this conversation or don't remember, like I didn't after we took a break for a while. A short-term rental is a dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit that's rented to any person or entity for a period of up to 30 consecutive nights. It's a vacation rental. It's the rentals that have been going on up on the mount in the resort communities for many decades, but have spread to other communities in recent years because of the online platforms like Airbnb and VRBOs. And so one of the reasons that we are looking at this is that there is growing interest in people renting out their houses or parts of their houses as short-term rentals. And quite frankly, our zoning code doesn't, doesn't really, And quite frankly, our zoning code doesn't, doesn't really, isn't clear. It doesn't speak to where, uh, it doesn't specifically allow short-term rentals in any homes. And so from a zoning perspective, um, that's considered not allowed use. But we do know there are hundreds, um, there's one estimate of maybe a thousand of them operating currently in Clackamas County. We have gotten, uh, complaints from a number of them or from neighbors who are, have made it very clear that the short-term rentals have the potential to negatively impact neighborhoods. Um, and we also know that there are a number of short-term rentals that are not paying the required transient room tax. And so, um, all motels, hotels, other lodging establishments have to pay a tax. And, um, right now there's, um, I can't remember off the top of my head, but not a whole lot of short-term rental operators that are paying the tax. And so in tying some regulations directly to that, the hope is that it would level the playing field both among operators of short-term rentals and also among other lodging establishments. And so the board asked us to go forth and, and look at potential options. Um, we have spent nearly two years on this project. We started doing research and we talked to other cities and counties, especially in Oregon, about how, if and how they regulate short-term rentals, um, what the lessons learned, what, you know, what was working and what was not working for them. Um, we've had an internal stakeholders group meetings with, um, some internal departments, building department, code enforcement, uh, we invited the, the housing, there's a representative from the housing authority there too, finance department, um, and a number of other departments to sort of understand from their perspectives what the issues were with, um, short-term rentals and with regulating them. We had a pretty extensive public outreach effort. This was largely in 2019. Um, some very well-attended community meetings, including one up on the mountain, which Murph is probably at, maybe not. But I mean, it had, you know, upwards of 150, 200 people there. Um, we've had throughout the whole process, press releases, social media, we've had our website, um, continually updated as we have, uh, new information and new meetings. We've had a couple of surveys. We have had eight, I think it's nine, but, um, eight confirmed policy sessions with the Board of County Commissioners. We had a work session with you all. We've had two public hearings with the Board of County Commissioners in, earlier this year in January and February. And then the board wasn't quite ready to adopt, um, this regulatory program. We had another policy session with them to discuss some of the issues, ended up not changing anything. Um, scheduled some more public hearings in April and those were, uh, canceled. And then the entire project was put on hold until fall of this year. Um, back in September and October, we heard from the board go forth. Um, we want to get this project finished up by the end of the calendar year. So to do that, um, it's a pretty, it's a pretty hefty hearing schedule, which I'll get to at the end of this presentation. Um, we've already had one public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners earlier this month, and I can talk about that in just a minute and why it came to them, not you. But what does this program look like? So as drafted currently, um, the proposed regulations would allow a short-term rental in any legal dwelling in unincorporated Clackamas County. Um, it would include a guest house, which is considered part of the dwelling for this code purpose. It's an extension of your dwelling, an additional bedroom, something like that. Um, it would be an allowed, an illegal accessory dwelling unit. There are some, um, to me obvious, maybe not obvious, dwellings that would not be allowed to be used as a short-term rental, specifically if, if the dwelling was approved under our land use code for a specific person or persons or use, um, farm worker housing, for example, temporary dwellings for care, hardship dwellings, those would not be allowed to be used. Um, the, if the dwelling is within the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary, the short-term rental has to be the primary residence or on the same property or tract as the owner's primary residence. And that's something that the board had asked to put in there because there was a concern about, um, both about, um, neighborhood impacts, but also about impacts to the housing stock um, and to affordability of housing in the urban area. And so each short-term rental operator must register, um, pay a fee and comply with all of the regulations. And if they don't, um, code enforcement may get involved if it's something that code enforcement would, if it's related to building or, um, any, um, violation of the regulations that the sheriff's department wouldn't deal with. The sheriff's department would still deal with the things that they deal with now, including the noise ordinance, um, certain illegal activities and things like that. So some specific requirements that went into, um, this program is a maximum overnight occupancy number. Um, it's calculated at two people per bedroom or sleeping area plus four additional. Um, however, even if you had six or more bedrooms, you couldn't have more than 15 people in there um, as the overnight occupancy. It's capped at 15. There's off-street parking requirements. Um, you'd have to have a minimum of one space. After that, it's one space per two sleeping areas. That's how you calculate the parking ratio for this. Um, we did put an exception in there, uh, recently, after having some conversations with folks who have property um, up in the rural tour, rural tourist, commercial district. Um, they, there are some dwellings up there that are developed under this resort accommodations category that's specific only to the RTC, which is specific only to a couple of the communities up on Mount Hood, um, Government Camp, Welch's, Rhododendron, and maybe some others. Um, it's, it allows on-street parking to be counted toward the parking ratio. And so this exception, um, essentially says that you're not required to have additional off-street spaces than what was required under your original development. Uh, because some of them don't, some of them just have the on-street parking. There's a number of building life-fire safety regulations, um, things like smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, monoxide detectors, um, code compliant barriers on hot tubs, pools. That would all be verified through a self expect inspection form. Um, we are not setting up and charging for a new inspection process. Um, that's, that form be provided by the county. And when somebody comes in and applies, they would have to submit that form with their application. Uh, noise, of course, we're not changing anything about the noise ordinance specific for short-term rentals. Um, any, anyone occupying a short-term rental would still need to comply with the county's noise ordinance. Um, posted quiet hours would need to be, uh, within the unit somewhere though. And there's a requirement also to have a, like a placard or some of our posting inside the unit with emergency contact, the registration number, maximum occupancy and some other information. I mean, this is very typical of short-term rental. If any of you have ever just rented a house out at the coast or something like that, you walk in and you see all of this information in front of you, um, usually posted on the wall or kitchen cabinet or something like that. A notice would be mailed to neighbors, uh, which would also include a contact, um, emergency contact information. And so, um, there's a number of other, uh, requirements put into the regulations, including they register and pay the transient lodging tax, maintaining garbage removal, um, proof of insurance and a number of other things. And so the way that the program is, um, drafted right now, um, if the board decides to adopt it, it would take effect, uh, July 1st, 2021. There's a number of reasons for that. Um, part of it is that it's going to take some time to get this program up and running. And we're going to need time to create the website, um, do public outreach, create forums, things like that. Excuse me. Um, also the, the registration fee and any fines for non-compliance are going to be adopted separately by the board through their normal fees and fines adoption process. And that doesn't happen till, um, spring of 2021. And, but, um, there will be a fee associated with this, um, if, if this is adopted by the board. And we have been told, um, by the board, uh, we heard loud and clear that this needs to be a full cost recovery program. Um, it's not going to be subsidized by general fund or any other monies. And so to staff it and have one administrative position, um, in finance and one code enforcement position, based on the number of short-term rentals we think are, that are out there, we are estimating the, the two-year registration fee of $800 to $900. Um, that is our estimate, not entirely sure where that's going to land in the spring. Um, but to fully implement this program, we need to fund those positions. And so I keep saying, we are going to take this application. It's actually not we in planning. This program is, um, expected to be housed in finance. And the reason is finance currently is the one, um, who is responsible for the transient room, the transient lodging taxes. And so they, um, think that they can take this registration program on in coordination with that. And so that's where it would be housed. And so speaking of where things are housed, there's really three parts, um, to this, the amendments that are proposed, um, for this program. And the bulk of the short-term rental and all of the short-term rental registration program would actually be in the county code. Uh, new section 810 has been drafted. Um, and it includes all the rules and regulations specific to short-term rentals. It includes all the application processes and requirements, the enforcement processes and actions. So this is a program, it's a registration. It's sort of essentially a licensing program that, um, is written into the county code. However, there are some zoning code amendments that would need to happen to eliminate conflicts with the county code um, to specifically, to be clear where short-term rentals are specifically allowed. Um, because remember our county, our, our ZDO currently doesn't do that. And so those amendments, um, at this point, as they're drafted, are really only to, um, the definitions section and to section 833, which talks about guest houses. Because currently there is a specific prohibition in the guest house section. Um, there's a specific prohibition for renting out a guest house or for using it as a source of rental income, I think is what it says. So those changes will need to be made. Um, and then finally, the last piece is the fines and fees adoption into the county code. It's appendix A is fees and appendix B is fines. Um, and like I said, that will, it should happen sometime spring-ish. So to get this done by the end of the year, with the exception of the fines and fees, um, it is a pretty hefty schedule. Uh, we have already had one hearing. Uh, like I said, it was on, on Thursday, November 5th at the board's business meeting. Um, it was the first reading of the county code amendments. So county code amendments don't come through the planning commission. Um, often we and planning aren't even involved in them. It's something that county council takes to the board. It requires a first and second reading with the board. Um, both of those are public hearings. They've had their first reading on November 5th. They took public testimony. It's actually the third first reading, but I won't, yeah. Um, so the, the board voted four to one to proceed to the second reading with the draft of this, um, the county code amendments. That second reading was originally scheduled for November 19th, but it, um, it had to be switched. And so it is now scheduled for Wednesday, November 25th. Um, understanding that that is the day before Thanksgiving. But we have to keep this schedule if we're trying to get this done by the end of the year. So the zoning code amendments, this is where you all would get involved. Um, your first, the, the first hearing for the zoning code amendments is with the planning commission with you all. And that's scheduled for Monday, November 23rd. We've already sent out notice, um, for this hearing and have sent out drafts. And you will be receiving all of that information and a staff report next Monday for the hearing the week after. The board's hearing to adopt the ZDO amendments is scheduled for Wednesday, December 9th at 9:30. And if they decide to adopt that, uh, if they approve it, the formal adoption of the ZDO amendments is scheduled for Thursday, December 17th. It's a lot. And ideally, what we were trying to do is have the county code adoption before the ZDO adoption. Because, um, if the board decides not to adopt the county code amendments, they will need to be asked the question of whether or not they want to move forward with the ZDO amendments. And so unfortunately, with the way the schedule is now, we will have already had our hearing with you. And we could talk about potential motions. If there's some question about whether or not the board actually adopts the program, uh, we can talk about that at the time. But this is the schedule and we are sticking to it, I think. Um, so that's it. We have a website for short-term rentals. That's pretty comprehensive, has a lot of information, has all of the public testimony that we've received, has information from all of the huge number of meetings that we've had. And it can be found there.
Martha, um, and I think we met back in June 2019 when we did our first big work session on this.
Okay.
Three things that just kind of came to my mind, and you addressed two of them this evening. One was, uh, you know, who's going to manage this? And, and you've decided, obviously finance, because it kind of melds with transient. Okay, get that. And that you're going to add a body there. That's how you're going to support it. And then the second real big concern that we brought up was, um, code enforcement. It sounds like you, you found another way to finance adding a, an officer there. Uh, one of the things I remember talking about, didn't see a whole lot in here other than it was going to happen. But how that was going to happen was, um, that's going to require especially initially an amazing amount of inspections coming in, making sure there's the fire extinguishers or the smoke and CO2 detectors and that the stairs have handrails and that the decks over 32 inches have handrails. And I mean, it's a lot. I mean, it's not just one inspection. It's going to have to be many. Um, where is that financed or is, you know, building going to absorb that for the first year or something?
Um, so we are not doing inspections. And this is set up with a self-inspection affidavit. And there are a number of jurisdictions out there who, who use this model. Um, there are some jurisdictions who make you pay even more and have an inspection. And there are some who do this self-inspection affidavit. And we decided to go that route and the board, um, directed us to go that route. For a couple of reasons, one is the cost, um, to the applicant. And the other one is the cost to, for inspectors. Um, because our building codes division, it would have to be a whole new inspection program is, is really the short answer to that. We can't just send our building inspectors out to do this also. And so this seems to be a, a method that works for other jurisdictions. And so that's, that's where we landed, the self-inspection affidavit, I mean.
And there's, so they're going to say, yes, all, I need all of these, but there'll be absolutely no verifying unless there's a complaint and now code enforcement comes in.
Yes.
Wow. Um, okay, we have Murph with his hand up. And you have to unmute.
Martha, I think we talked about this before, and that was insurance. And this would also apply to your question. Uh, if we required a short-term rental insurance, uh, that would probably require an inspection of the home by the insurance company. I have a nightmare story from family, uh, that had a home in central Oregon. They rented to a, a party of, uh, peace officers that were celebrating a wedding over the weekend. Two months later, they received notice that someone broke their neck when they fell down the stairs. And it, so my family was being sued. Um, and they only had residential insurance. Uh, it would have been nice to have that extra layer. But at this point, I know we're not requiring it. I did hear, uh, talk of that it would be too expensive. But, uh, that was something that I thought we could supplement our inspections. We require, require a commercial insurance. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. And there is a requirement in there for insurance. I was pulling it up because I don't know um, as much about, it says proof of liability insurance coverage on the short-term rental. And so I don't know, um, and I know that, I think you talked with Nate Boderman, maybe who was drafting a lot of these code amendments in our county council, um, county council's office. And that is the language that we landed on. And I don't know if you feel that that's not. And I don't know if you feel that that's not sufficient or that's too expensive. I'm not sure which way to go, because I'm not entirely sure what that means, proof of liability insurance.
Interesting. Brian, oh, Brian, you had a question?
I think Murph was.
Martha, I'm just, this may not be relevant, but I'm curious if you, there, there was obviously a dissenting vote when this went to a second reading. And I'm curious if there was a rationale or reason for that that's relevant.
It's, it's been a hard process also. It's a very controversial subject. And there, there have been a lot of concerns all along. And I think the fee is one of the big concerns right now that was, is causing some hesitation. I don't think that it generally is having a program or allowing short-term rentals. I think there's support for that. It's just the level of regulation and the fee.
Okay.
I have a question. How many, how many registrations do you think you will have? You know, just the volume that you would have. And then the, the second question is if somebody's has a short-term rental in a mobile home or manufactured home, and let's say they had five or six of these in a, in a park, would they be paying a short-term rental registration fee for each one? Or would it be under one umbrella?
Each dwelling unit that would be used as a short-term rental has to register separately. So each would have its own registration and each would be paying a registration fee in that scenario. And so I forgot what your first question was. I wrote something. Sorry. What was your first question?
Well, the first question was, how many do you anticipate that you would have short-term rental registrations?
That's a really good question. There is not good information out there about how many are operating in the county. Based on the best information that we have, we are estimating there's around a thousand right now operating. And when we were calculating the fee, we were, ooh, I don't have it in front of me. I think we're assuming maybe seventy-five percent compliance with that to, to calculate the fee on. I don't think we're going to get a hundred percent compliance. So that would be about seven fifty.
What's the penalty for non-compliance?
Well, there's a process, sort of like the code enforcement process. You know, somebody's notified. I don't know what all the steps in the process are, but at some point it becomes a fine. And
But if neighbors are okay with it, there's no complaint, there's no enforcement, there's no penalty for not doing anything. It's interesting.
I don't think in that instance, it's only going to be complaint-driven. I know currently, the staff in the finance department do try to find other, or try to find short-term rentals that are not registered to pay the transient lodging tax. And I know that there are services that will do that work for you. And so it's pretty easy to find some of these if you, if you look around, you know, on the Airbnb and VRBO and other websites. So I think for that piece of it, it's going to be a little bit more proactive than just, you know, a neighbor complaining. But I don't know what those fines are going to be yet. We've heard, we've heard a lot of testimony and even some commissioner support about having very stiff fines as a, as a deterrent. I think we need to, if I'm understanding, our county council, we need to set these fines sort of reasonable in relation to other fines for similar offenses. And so I don't know where that's going to land us, but there will be fines.
So the cost of doing this is basically the registration fee. If you're, if you're a, a short-term rental, right? You would have the registration fee and you would be paying this transient tax. And the registration fee is going back to pay the cost of administering the program. Is the transient tax just going to the general fund? Where does that go?
The transient room tax goes to tourism. And there are very strict parameters about what those taxes can be used for under state law, I believe. And it goes to tourism and it funds tourism and tourism activities, trying to get more tour, tourism into the county. And I don't think it goes anywhere else. Maybe a very small portion of it, Jennifer? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The taxes, you know, exist and it's due, short-term rental operators are supposed to be paying it now, but of course, the compliance is uneven. So there's a hope that it will become more fair.
I guess it's not really a planning issue. I was just curious, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know all the limitations on the, on the tax.
Are there any requirements around ADA?
I don't believe so. That would be through some of the building codes language. And so I don't think so. I mean, the intent is to not make people have to completely upgrade everything in their house to current codes, because that's not really a reasonable request. And so I don't think that if your house is not ADA accessible, that we can require someone to make it that way.
And so let, let's just take that scenario further. Let's just assume they're on an Airbnb and they advertise as ADA accessible. And somebody pays to rent it and they go and it really isn't. I mean, you can't, there's into ramp or the doors aren't three feet wide or whatever. Now, now what happens? Do the people that rented the room, who are they calling? And who are, I mean, they're maybe getting on Airbnb and complaining, but how does that part get back to where it should be is the county? So just trying to picture, that was a great question, Louise. Thank you.
I don't know that it comes back to the county. It, and I, I don't, I don't, I saw Jennifer unmute. Maybe you have, you always have a more articulate answer than me.
I do not always. I was just going to say, I do not see the county getting into the role of, it's not really consumer protection. I mean, there's a little bit of that, because we have these building code, you know, the carbon monoxide detectors and the smoke. There's some, you know, there certainly are some public safety aspects to the regulations. But we wouldn't be sort of like arbitrating disputes because somebody was undercharged or overcharged or didn't get their deposit back or didn't, you know? Definitely not our rule. So I honestly don't know where you, you know, where you go now if you have a dispute with the, with the owner, I suppose to the platform, you know, to Airbnb or VRBO or whatever, although maybe good luck, right? I don't really know what they're, how they respond.
There aren't any smoke or CO2 detectors and they're the burning fireplace. So then, do they call code enforcement?
If it's a violation of the county code that we're adopting, we would enforce those regulations. So yes, if they, if there was no carbon monoxide detector, we could enforce on that. If they didn't have the placard posted, we could enforce on that. If they, you know, violated the noise ordinance, then the sheriff's office wouldn't. So yes, anything that's in our code, we would have the enforcement authority over.
Okay, okay. We're going to bring this up at our next town hall. And I'm pretty confident we're going to get these questions. I just want to, that's a, a good distinction. Thank you. Other questions? Brian, your hand's still up?
It's not supposed to be, sorry. I don't even know how to take it down. Thanks.
Let's see.
Murph's waving.
Unmute.
You should be glad I'm even raising my hand.
I could go on all night, just like Brian. But anyway, are we looking at private campgrounds being a part of this later on? And what I mean by private campgrounds, I mean, if you go on sites like homecamper.com or lamphub.com, there are some awesome places. And I don't want to see it go away, but I, I'd like to see it encouraged, actually. I mean, because that's pretty neat, neat stuff, but.
So to the extent that they are legally established campgrounds, which are allowed in some of our rural zones, then this, these regulations wouldn't apply. They're a campground. They're not dwellings. I don't know that all of those that are advertised out there are legal campgrounds. That's something that we'll have to probably hash out as this moves forward. But they wouldn't be required to register as a short-term rental. They're just a campground.
When I was first introduced to this concept, one of the very first people I heard from was Chris Roth over in the Lake Oswego area, but it is unincorporated Clackamas County. Anyway, you know, I said, oh, wow, you know, is this a problem? And she began to describe quite a scenario. And it was literally in Lake Oswego. And it was a single-family dwelling. And on any given evening, there were thirty to thirty-five people in this home. You know, maybe three or four bedroom. Obviously, the restroom capacity was nowhere near. So the outside was being used, garbage. So I want to, I know this is going to be a biggie for my group is, you know, okay, now they're packing them in. Who are they calling again? I mean, I'm going to assume it's code enforcement, because that just seems sanitary, health and safety and, you know, parking and all of it. But that was real and it was in Lake Oswego.
Yes. And we, we also have heard about that house. And I assume it's the same one. And so that's an, that is an instance where they are exceeding the maximum occupancy, overnight occupancy, potentially, if they're all sleeping there. And that would be something that code enforcement would try to enforce on. But you've identified one of the big problems and we, everybody, all the jurisdictions who regulate short-term rentals have grappled with this. Our code enforcement people work regular business hours, Monday through Friday. They're not working Friday night at midnight. They're not working Saturday night at midnight. And so a couple of things that we've tried to write into these regulations that other jurisdictions have done is having this first point of contact, having a twenty-four-hour emergency contact, the notice that's mailed to the neighbors. What I would like to see is part of the setup is, and I've seen this in other jurisdictions, is they have a database. And you type in the license number or the address number probably, and it pulls up contact information. And so the hope is the first point of contact is somebody who can come take care of it. And if they're not responding, they're, it's going to have to go through code enforcement. Or if it's illegal activities, you know, loud, crazy noise, huge parties, I
Well, and Martha, we talked about that scenario on the mountain. And not just having on the internet, but literally a sign, Mark, Murph, yeah, nod, I thought so, like a sign saying, any problems, complaints or whatever on the boundary of this property, then you call. And is that still okay?
The board decided to opt for a mail notice rather than posting outside. That was one of the options that we put in front of them. And there was some concern about if you're posting, I think there's concern about crime and people knowing that it's a vacant house a lot of times. And so that's why they opted for the other option. You know, right or wrong, I, I don't know. I mean, I've seen it, I've certainly seen postings outside of short-term rentals and, you know, coastal communities when you're out there at the beach and stuff. It's done. But they decided not to.
And Murph, how do you feel about that?
Well, I have one behind me, one, another one around the block, not very far away. There's three of them I can think of right off the bat. And they're usually pretty well-behaved, but they'll sometimes go crazy and there's no contact. So it would be nice to have a way, instead of going over and ask them kindly to please tone it down, to contact the owner, so he could reach out and contact them. One of my worries is during the COVID shutdown, they didn't, these homes never stopped. We had people from out of state showing up. And you, there was a fifty-mile radius, if I remember, that Oregon was under that you were not supposed to go outside of. But these short-term rentals just kept going on and on and on. And that was a concern that my neighborhood was writing on Nextdoor about. So I thought I'd bring it up.
And, and we did hear, I actually heard from some people and trying to think where, maybe through health, I'd have to look and see where those complaints were being funneled through. It was through county health department, I think. Because other, you heard about other communities like Cannon Beach, I think was one of them, that, you know, their city commission said through COVID, you know, you are not allowed to rent your, that you use your vacation rental as a vacation rental. But our board didn't do that. And then, of course, there was this issue of, we don't have any registration program. We don't necessarily know where these all are anyway.
Why do we not have an enforcement officer that works on the weekends? I mean, I, you know, beyond just funding, but like, we're, we're talking about expanding the program, why isn't that something that we're thinking about? I mean, enforcement problems often happen outside of business hours and we don't have anyone there.
And I think that is a really good point, Brian, not just on this. Some of our biggest problems are on the weekends. Oh, poor Jennifer, she unmuted.
No, I mean, I just, I think that if you want to have that conversation, we need to have people here from code enforcement, because off the top of my head, I'm thinking, I don't, you know, I don't know if there are, you know, they're not law enforcement officers. And you start talking about going out on nights and weekends and there's really not much support in the office. And most of our code enforcement people, it's not typical, but they're really on call, you know, that they're like going out at a moment's notice to find out what's going, it, it's, that isn't really how the process works. It's like they get the complaint, they send the letter, they wait to hear from the applicant. Then if the applicant isn't, you know, then they go out. Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's not that sort of like you pick up the phone and call the sheriff and they, and they respond. I'm not saying it couldn't change, be different or whatever, but it, but it really would be a shift in the way that program is administered. And I, I suspect it opens up new things about job classifications and what, you know, who are we hiring and what's the training and how is it supervised and what kind of, you know, all those things off the top of my head. But we would really need to speak to the people in that department to talk about, you know, what the, what the limitations are of being able to do that.
All right. Anyone else? Wow, Martha, you've been busy.
I did, I'm actually a little bit, go ahead. Sorry, I did want to jump in and just mention, so as Martha alluded to, the, the, the schedule is a little bit complicated and the fact that you're now going to have your hearing before the board actually makes a decision on the program. We can talk about it next week, but I guess I would just like, or two weeks from now. I would expect you're going to have people that will want to testify. This issue has been closely followed by lots of people. There did not end up being a lot of testimony at the first reading. There has been a ton of written testimony, of course, not about the ZDO amendments, but about the county code. So I think, you know, you will want to think about how you structure your, your responses to people who are testifying, as well as your own deliberations in your motion, because it's going to be pretty hard, I think, for people to separate the two issues. Ultimately, for you though, what you're taking action on, if you will, is the amendments to the zoning code that simply say, in a nutshell, short-term rentals are allowed in any lawful dwelling unit, including any guest house. Basically, that's it. You may end up wanting to structure your recommendation that says to the board, hey, if you don't adopt the registration program, we don't think you should adopt this, or we do. I mean, it's certainly fine for you to have an opinion on, on all of that. But I think it will be important for the public to understand that, you know, technically, this is not a hearing about all of those things that are going on in the county code and that really they should be focusing their testimony on, should the zoning code allow this use? And, you know, it, it's just, it is going to be hard to separate it.
And that being said, Jennifer, will you make sure that I have an opportunity in the script? We're beginning to make this really clear, that there's two parts and this is what we're focusing on. And if you won't take testimony, of course, we always will. This is what we'll be deliberating on and, okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, and for my part, I, I will do a very different presentation at that hearing and it will be focused on the zoning code amendments. I wanted you all to have the background and have this conversation and understand sort of what the regulations were and the structure of what's going where. So when you got into your hearing and people started asking questions, it didn't turn around to, well, how come we haven't thought about this? Why aren't we regulating? Why aren't we regulating this? Where we are just somewhere else, maybe, right, was the answer.
That's, that's great, Martha.
So yes, I will definitely try to help focus on the ZDO amendments.
Thank you. Good, good, good. MRF?
Another question that I wanted to ask was, does this change property values? Now that a, a home, it's an income property, what is that going to do down the line? And in my neighborhood, if, you know, we end up with 20%, 30% of the homes of short-term rentals as income properties, what's that going to do to the tax base in this area? So I, yes, I, I need more too. I think of these things all the time.
No, I like your questions and those are good questions. And I think one thing that we have to keep in mind is it's already happening. And so I don't think in creating a program and making it cost money and writing regulations, it's suddenly going to drastically increase the number of operators. I, I could be wrong. It might increase it. But there's already maybe a thousand of these operating in the county and a lot of them are up on the mountain. And so I'm, feel like it's not going to be a drastic change. I could be wrong. It is 2020. I've been wrong a lot.
Oh, that's funny.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Let's see. MRF? You are here. Hi, Tom.
I've been here all along.
You've been very quiet.
Guess, guess my thought is, is the, the VRBO, the, all these are kind of new ways of renting short-term rentals. But I have to think there's been lots of short-term rentals for many, many years up in the mountains. Before all this technology made it so much easier for people to rent out their homes. So, so the question is, is well, this has been going on for years. People have been renting out their homes. It just, it just wasn't as easy for them to rent them out as it is now. So a, all this time, they were exempt from, from any of these fees. Is that true? And so now all of a sudden, because of this new, these new opportunities or people are, there's, we're looking at ways to collect revenue that we weren't collecting before from a lot of these same rental properties. So it, it raises an interesting question in my mind is like, well, why was it okay all these years before? And now it's not. So I can see why this could be a very controversial issue. Because it's only because of new technology, it's, that it's gotten more people doing it.
All right. Well, now they can advertise to rent, but now we can find them because they're advertising.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, everyone. Any more questions before we move on? Martha, anything else you need from us?
No, thank you for putting up with me and my hoarse voice. And I'm going to hand you over to Jennifer. So I think she's doing a schedule review.
Yes, I think we're on to other business, Jennifer. Thank you, Martha.
So I don't have any other business. If you want, we have minutes and then schedule review. So maybe do your minutes and then we can talk briefly about the schedule. There's not much.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at the minutes? Could I make a request, Darcy? It, it's one word, but it's meaningful to me right now. And that is second page, one, two, three, four, fifth, the big fifth large paragraph from the bottom. It said, Commissioner Stevens pointed out that it would be nice. And that's true too, but I would love that word, nice to be helpful. This would have been helpful to us all to hear from neighbors. And so I just think that that happens to be one of my pet projects right now, as Jennifer. So I, I would appreciate that. Any other corrections or to minutes? Okay.
I will move approval of the June 10th minutes as changed.
Thank you, Brian. And do we have a second?
All second.
MRF second. Great. Any further discussion? All right. Do you want to take a roll call, Darcy?
Commissioner Lopes.
Approve.
Commissioner Murphy.
I approve.
Commissioner Pack.
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Pascoe.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'll stay. I wasn't present.
Commissioner Schrodle.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Approve.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes, approve. We're unanimous with one exception. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So I think we're now moving on to schedule review.
So as we've discussed, known two weeks from tonight will be the hearing on ZDO 273, 273. Is that right, Martha? I think it's 273. Right. I was just looking at it, the short-term rentals. And then it's possible, but not for sure, that we might do a study session on December 14th for the Park Avenue Station Area Plan. Karen and I are going to talk about it. It may be that that's going to make more sense to push that off to January. So we will let you know as soon as possible. So you can free up your calendar.
You said December 14th and what park review?
Oh, it would be the Park Avenue Station Area Plan. Yeah, Park Avenue. Right. We want to do a study session with you on it because the, the sort of public process, the community advisory committee has wrapped up their work. And they're going to be making a presentation along with the consultants and the project team to the board on December 2nd. And then there's going to be a decision point coming about whether to move forward with code amendments. But, you know, we, we want you up, you to know about all the great work that's been done. And this was something that I know in, in the past for the long-range planning work program, there were commissioners who really advocated for this. So, but December 14th just may be too soon. So potentially, but not for sure. And if not, then we would push it off to January. So there are no quasi-judicial applications in currently. So, you know, I would say your meeting on December 28th is canceled. We can say that. And the 14th, let's just hold it for another week or so, and then we'll let you know for sure.
Okay. And I know it all talked about having a work session when there was time and then we'll.
Yes.
To talk about, it isn't protected land or resource lands. It's like waterways and.
Yes.
So we're still, that's still on your to-do list. Great. Thanks, Jennifer.
Yes, it is.
Um, let's see. State county commissioners, what have they been up to?
What have they been up to? Let's see, they approved both of the comp plan amendment zone change applications that you heard. One in August that Martha and Melissa presented, and then the one in September that Glenn presented. They've approved both of those. One is done and final and the other one Glenn's working on the final paperwork to get, to get it formally, you know, formally changed. And other than that, it's, it's, yeah, it's been short-term rentals and Martha already showed you the, their schedule for that. And then as I said, on December 2nd, they'll have a presentation on the Park Avenue Plan as that work wraps up. That ought to finish out the calendar year and then we'll, with the long range, the other thing that's going on is the long-range planning work program, which I think I mentioned to you at a recent meeting, that we're, believe it or not, ready to start again. Even though it was a two-year work program, it's hard to imagine, but we are. So the letter has gone out from Karen's team, soliciting ideas from CPOs and interested parties. And the, just the deadline, I mean, right, we will continue to take suggestions, but we're really encouraging people to get us their ideas by December 18th. And then staff will kind of vet those and we'll be moving toward having a work session with you also early in 2021 to talk about what came in and what your ideas are. And then ultimately moving toward public comment. And, you know, you, most of you have gone through that process before, but we'll, we'll talk about it more for, for those who have not.
Right. And Karen, we, Beaver Creek has at least a list again, so we're coming your way. All righty. I think we are down to adjourned. Before I do, are there any other comments, questions from anyone? Super, super glad to see everybody again. Louise, welcome back on the airwaves and Steven, I hope you feel better.
Thanks.
Welcome. Martha, nice job. That was big.
Yeah.
I really appreciate all your work and care and thank you so much. The packet was fabulous to read. It just really, I just felt confident coming into this. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
Oh, absolutely. Fantastic job.
I would agree.
Yep. Well, thank you. It was good to see you all.
Yeah, enjoy the coast.
All right. And I think we're there. We'll be adjourned at 9:12.